Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education's Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Today is January 23rd, 2019. We're holding this meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I'm Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. The order of business will be an audit update, a financial update, followed by public participation, and then we will adjourn. As always, I remind everyone that courteous behavior is desired and always expected. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of this meeting was posted on Friday, January 18th, 2019, at least 48 hours before this meeting at Boardroom Principal Office, 42 West Madison Lobby, and on CPSBOE.org.
The Finance and Audit Committee meeting, a Wednesday, January 23rd, 2014, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
And just to clarify, 2019?
What did I say?
2014.
Did anybody say 2014?
Yes, sir. Thank you. January 23rd, 2019.
Getting old is a son of a god.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a real call. Member Furlong.
Present.
Member Garza.
Present.
Vice President Guzman.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
And President Clark.
I think I'm here.
Five members present. We have a quorum, and I would also like to recognize our General Counsel, Joe Moriarty. Thank you.
Tilly, are you going to start? Please.
Good morning, President Clark, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Jenny Bennett. I'm the Acting Chief Internal Auditor and Chief Financial Officer for CPS. I'm here to present to you the internal audit plan. As you know, we presented to you last month the results of the enterprise risk assessment. This risk assessment was started over a year ago at the direction of CEO Jackson, which identified the need to identify and prioritize risks at the district so that we can develop comprehensive strategies towards mitigating those risks. As a result of her direction, a formal enterprise risk assessment was kicked off, and last month we presented those results to you. The audit plan being presented to you today is derived from the results of that work and has focused largely on the highest-risk areas that were identified and is focusing the work of internal audit on addressing those risks. The proposed audit plan to you that we're presenting here has three different layers, as we identify on the page on the screen. The three different layers of the audit plan are meant to address three key functional areas of good enterprise risk assessment and management. The first is to affect change. The second is to identify areas for continuous improvement, and the third is to build a culture around risk management and continuous improvement. As we've identified on this page, in the first area, we would like to build the capacity and work around special projects and internal audit. This includes taking the risk management assessment into Phase Two and creating a more mature structure around enterprise risk assessment. This includes addressing some of the Tier One risks that were identified through the enterprise risk assessment, as well as embedding those enterprise risks into continuous improvement, which is a structure that we have already internally for improving goals of the district. In addition, we'd like to develop and facilitate training around board policies and procedures, as well as serve as a consultative arm towards other departments for timely management and advice for best practices. The second area of the audit plan includes identifying areas of risk and moving towards that continuous improvement. This includes, first off, providing uniform coverage across all of the district. We'll talk about this more in the audit plan on the subsequent pages, as well as providing uniform coverage in the school audit plan. The principal transition reviews, which we currently do conduct, is also another area for us to be able to identify issues at the school level. As it relates to the third area of risk, this is new to the audit plan, and this includes building a culture around risk assessment and risk practices. In our audit plan for this coming year, we expect to conduct ongoing discussions with all of the different departments of Central Office in order to identify areas of risks that may need monitoring going forward, as well as conduct pre-audit assessments of internal controls, compliance, governance, segregation of duties, and other overall operational efficiencies. Finally, we would also like to conduct ongoing touchpoints with all of the schools as well to ensure that we're building that culture of risk mitigation at the school level. More specifically, as it relates to the audit plan for Central Office, these are areas that we've identified as areas of focus for the upcoming year, as well as ongoing and a longer-term audit plan. The areas here were identified through a number of measures. I mentioned the fact that the higher-risk areas identified in the risk assessment are areas where we focused on, but importantly, we wanted to ensure equal coverage across the entire district in all of the key functional areas. So what you noticed in the various audits that are outlined here, there is coverage for finance, for academics, for operations, for innovation and incubation, for talent, and all of the different key functional areas of the district. As it relates to the specific audits, we have an audit here listed in no particular order for accounts payables, ensuring that there aren't duplicate payments and that we are paying accurately as it relates to our vendors, ensuring student safety through anti-bullying and practices, and ensuring compliance with the practices and policies that we have in place. Taking a look at charter school governance, again, ensuring policies and procedures are appropriately applied with charters. Leave, finance, and IT systems, this would be taking a look at the useful lives of our IT systems and ensuring that we have a plan for addressing any useful life issues that may exist. Leave management, this would be a post-implementation plan of the management system that was recently put in place. Low-income student enrollment, this is taking a look at the count of low-income students and ensuring that we are compliant with various federal rules for funding for various aspects of enrollment. Nutrition services, this is a top-to-bottom review of a functional area that we haven't taken a look at in a while. Onboarding and offboarding process, this will be to take a look at ensuring accurate pay related to the onboarding and offboarding process. Settlements, claim tracking, and data analytics, this will be to take a look at some of the data analytics around how we are evaluating what settlements and claims we're paying and how we can change front-end practices to address that. A special education compliance review, this is good governance and best practices to take an ongoing look at compliance related to certain aspects of special ed. Sports administration and safety, to ensure safety of our students and practices and policies, again, are being applied. Travel expenses and reimbursement, as well as the volunteer process. So these are areas that we've identified out of the risk assessment that we'd like to take a look at for the upcoming number of years as it relates to various Central Office functions. As it relates to the school audit plan expansion, currently, the schools are being audited based on a risk-based sample selection, which is based on a number of various KPIs and risk indicators. These could include the amount of cash available in the bank. It could also include various academic information, like the enrollment and SQRP statistics, payroll information, prior history, but also importantly, and something we're changing a bit for the upcoming audit plan, is the length of time since the last audit. We are going to build internal capacity in order to shorten the amount of time that schools have last been audited and be able to keep a more regular schedule of audits with the schools. The current audit scopes includes a number of functional areas, but importantly, we are also working to expand the scope. We are looking to create a more student-centric scope for school audits, which will include some additional focus on safety and security, facilities, as well as areas of student wellness. We've identified some of the areas of that scope that we look to expand upon. Finally, as it relates to the school audits, we did want to give you an update on audits that were conducted within the second quarter of fiscal year '19. There were 12 audits in total that were conducted. The majority of these audits were principal transition reviews, and so as principals have been transitioned into a new role, we conduct a more limited scope audit in order to provide them with accounting of their current systems and help them to be able to manage going forward. Of those audits, the performance that we saw in the results of the audits are not dissimilar from previous quarter audits that we provided to you, and some of the common school findings that we've seen as it relates to supporting documentation related to cash transactions and various other cash activities were found. We have asked for management action plans from all of the various schools that were audited, and will continue to follow up on those audits. In addition to that, as I mentioned at the previous quarter's audit committee meeting, we are also implementing a more extensive follow-up procedure as it relates to findings that are found in audits and ensuring that actions are being taken to address those findings. We followed up on a total of 78 audits. These include 73 from fiscal year '18 and five from fiscal year '19, and have been receiving responses from schools and many of which are making progress on their action plan. And so that's a program which we think will help to not just find the issues at the schools, but allow us to start to affect change and to really improve upon some of the practices at the schools. And that concludes my audit update.
Thank you, Jenny. Board members, questions? I have, go back to that chart where you were listing all of the, they're right there. Generally, internal audits focuses on internal controls, financial issues, operating issues. I'm particularly pleased to see that you included in your focus student safety, which is an area of concern to all of us, certainly everyone on the board, and I know Dr. Jackson and her senior staff. It's not necessarily a traditional issue where internal audit would do, but this tells me that we're taking this student safety extremely serious.
Yes, that's correct. You saw that in the enterprise risk assessment. We put a lot more focus on students in that assessment. You'll see that in the audit plan here as well. There's a lot more focus on student safety, so it's not your traditional operational and finance audit plan, but also including anti-bullying, as well as the volunteer process. I also understand that you're getting a briefing on OSP as well later today. You won't see OSP here, but there are audits being-
Will you tell people what OSP stands for?
Office of Student Protection. And there are audits being planned for in that area as well. So there is a lot of focus in that area, and that was a significant component of the discussion around the audit plan that is being conducted in a separate briefing.
Thank you. Excellent report. Okay, thank you very much. Melinda?
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, President Clark, Vice President Guzman, Dr. Jackson, members of the board. I'm Melinda Geldard, Controller for CPS, and I'm here today to present the results of our annual external financial audit and federal single audit. And here we also have members from our external audit firm, Bigger Tilly, here today. So first, I'd like to give an overview of what's actually included in the district's annual financial audit. Of course, Chicago Public Schools is the third-largest school district in the nation. We literally process millions of transactions every year, financial transactions and non-financial transactions. All of that information is reviewed in our annual financial audit and also with the federal single audit for our federal grants. So overall, the annual financial audit covers our financial statements, our basic financial statements, which shows our current fiscal condition and also long-term projections of what our fiscal condition will be in the future with our fund balance numbers. So also with the annual financial audit, we hope to gain, to receive an unmodified audit opinion from the audit firm. And I'm happy to report that this year, we have received an unmodified audit opinion from the external auditors. And for the federal single audit, which is conducted simultaneously with the programs that were selected this year, the major programs for our grants, which included our nutrition programs, our breakfast and lunch programs for our students, and also 21st Century programs and another Department of Education program, those were also reviewed. With the federal single audit, the auditors look for financial information, and they also review various operational information, such as contracting, procurement, payroll, other information that has to be in line with the regulations that were stipulated from the federal government with those federal grants. So it's a lot more intensive than the financial audit side. They pretty much look at all aspects of the federal grants. So at the culmination of both of these audits, we issue the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That's the district's CAFR. That document is presented to several regulatory agencies. We have to submit it to the feds and state and local authorities. It's posted online, so our bondholders can review that information, and for our parents and for our other stakeholders to get a view of the district's entire financial condition. With this document, we also issue a separate document, which is about 10% the size of the CAFR. It's the Popular Annual Financial Report, and that document is presented in real-world language for our average citizens, so they can also understand the fiscal condition of the district without having a financial and accounting background. So once the external audit is completed, we also have to complete an annual report for the State Board of Education. So this document is presented in the state's format. We pretty much take the CAFR that the district issues and reformat it to the format that the state requires us to do. That report is due on February 15th. Due to the size and complexity of the district, we are allowed additional time to complete that report, but it is also mandatory. The auditors also issue a separate audit opinion for that state report. And also new this year, we have a federal report. It's through the Every Student Succeeds Act. It's also coming from the feds, and it's requiring us now to present that financial information down to the school and department level. So we have our CAFR, which is 250 pages. We have our PAFR, which is about 25 pages. We have the state report, but then also the feds want to see, down to that very micro level, how we are presenting that financial information by school, by department level. And it's basically challenging for the district because we budget a lot of things centrally here through Central Office and push those monies out to the schools. So we've developed test reports, and that deadline is September 30th for this year. The overall annual audit process for the district actually extends eight months, so it's not just a few weeks for us to sort of pull information together and run some reports. It's an eight-month process that starts with the signing of the engagement letter and runs through me presenting the financial results here today. And it's a very complex process. It spans the entire organization. The audit firm has about 30 staff here for five or six months during the year, but they also start by going out to schools and visiting departments and making sure that we are actually processing transactions the way that we say that we are. They want to watch us actually process payroll, onboard employees, process vendor disbursements. So they do all that in the early months, and then in the later months, they're actually here full-time to test all of our transactions. So this next slide actually gives a history of the audit findings of the district for the last five years. And I'm happy to report that for the second year in a row, the district has received zero material weaknesses and zero significant deficiencies in our audit.
Now, we should pause on this because this is significant. Everyone in the audience are not CPAs or don't all have financial backgrounds, but when you first start speaking, you made reference to getting a clean audit. Without overstressing this, although I don't think you could overstress it enough, to go from where we were, let's say, in 2014, with 24 issues of material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to zero, is a testimony to the fine work in your office, the better internal controls that exist in CPS today than five years ago, you know, resulting in what is a very difficult thing. There's probably a statistic on this, and I should know it and I don't. Do, I'm looking at the auditors, 80% of the folks you audit get clean audits, and 90%? How big is the number?
Most of our clients get unmodified, audit clean, and done their financial statements. Not everybody receives zero material weaknesses. So you should be very careful.
Spoken by outside experts. But I think the pride is in the institution and the work that's been put in over the years to put in remedies where we had weaknesses or where we had deficiencies, and of course, having a really good external auditor part them out to us so we can fix them. So you can leave it up for a while.
So just for clarification, a material weakness is the most egregious audit finding. That's a situation that would materially impact the financial statement. So basically, we issue the financial statements to show our financial condition. We don't want to present information that's misleading to the public, so the auditors want to make sure that we don't have any transactions recorded or balances showing that would materially misrepresent our condition. The significant deficiency is the second level, so it's an audit finding that's pretty egregious. It doesn't rise to the level of material weakness, but it's also important enough to bring to the attention of the board and to the public that this is something that was previously incorrectly reported.
The board has had literally hundreds of meetings with Ron DeNardo over the years, and I can tell you, I've just been eyeing Ron for the last 30 seconds or so. I've never seen a bigger smile on Ron's face, so we should take note of that. You've done well by your, by our chief financial officer.
Thank you, sir. And also recapping, the federal single audit included those four major programs, two of them for the nutrition programs and 21st Century, and the student support and academic enrichment program. Again, these programs are considered major programs because they are higher in risk or they have exceeded the threshold for recommended by the feds that we have to take a deeper look at them. So they receive pretty much, you know, the deep dive this year, and so the folks that work with those programs also need to be commended. So, good information, financial highlights. So this slide shows a year-over-year comparison of our 2017 and 2018 results. But just for reference, the district is required to actually prepare two sets of financial statements. The first set of financial statements, called the full accrual statements or the government-wide statements, those are similar to the financial statements that you would see for private sector. So for the purpose of this presentation, I will focus on the governmental or the fund-level statements because those statements are more directly in line with our budget. So as you can see in the first half of the chart here, for our total revenues in our general operating fund, we ended with total revenues of $6.1 billion in 2018, and that's up $963 million from 2017. So there are a lot of things that drove that change, a lot of one-time transactions, and I'll go into that now. So basically, the revenues increased in the general operating fund primarily because of the change in the state funding formula. We've now transitioned to the evidence-based funding formula, which ensures that we receive payments more timely. The state actually caught up on previously late payments this year, and they paid more timely this year, so we were able to recognize a lot more revenue for the financial statements this year versus last year. Also, the state, they ponied up, and they added more monies to our state pension fund, so they're picking up the normal cost now for our pension fund, it's about $221 million, and we record that contribution also. And in addition, we had numerous debt restructuring transactions, which allowed us to report excess funds. These were funds that were freed up from those debt transactions. We were able to now use them for operating purposes, so those monies are now recorded in the operating fund also. And they stem from prior-year reimbursements for capital, for savings with those debt restructurings. So overall, the district across all funds, we recorded revenues of $9 billion. But that number is not inflated, but it includes $2.5 billion from those debt transactions that I talked about. So on the financial statements, you'll see those transactions being recorded technically. They're shown as revenues or other financing sources, so we have to take that into account when we look at overall revenues. So on the expense side, the district for the general operating fund, we ended with $5.5 billion in expenses, and that's $216 million over last year, where we recorded about $5.3 billion in expenses. And what's driving that increase? We had higher instructional support personnel costs. We have expanded our facilities, outsourcing management programs, so we have higher contracting services costs there. And we also expanded our E-Rate program, so we have higher telecom costs. So we also see on the debt service fund, we have to report the payback or the debt refunding. So as we issued bonds to pay off debt, we have to show the money going back out, so the debt service fund is pretty much a wash. In our capital fund, we had higher expenses of $101 million, and that's because last year, we issued bonds for capital projects, and this year, we're actually doing the work, so we're spending down those proceeds. Any questions on this slide? And now for fund balance.
It's so much good news, people don't know what to say.
And now for fund balance. Fund balance is calculated, basically, we're taking our total revenues across all sources, and we're backing out or subtracting our total expenses for our purposes. So in 2017, when we looked at all our revenues, subtracted all of our expenses, we were actually at a deficit of $148 million last year, but that was driven by the governor, remember, he vetoed $215 million of funding mid-year, so that had a direct impact on our fund balance last year. This year, with those one-time transactions, we were actually $599 million revenues over expenses for 2018, so that's a drastic change from last year. So when all is said and done, for the general operating fund, we recorded ending fund balance of $324 million, a positive. So for the first time in three years, the district has recorded a positive fund balance. Last year, in 2017, you can see we had a deficit of $275 million. So that's, again, a change of $600 million from last year.
You know, since most people are not, don't have your level of financial understanding, I'm trying to think of a way that we can say this, because all the numbers are absolutely correct, of course. At the same time, much of this is driven by things that are not really cash or one-time events, so we have to be real pleased with where we are, but I don't want anyone to get the impression that the only thing that comes to mind is the slang that's inappropriate for me to use, so that we are, all our problems are behind us, and indeed, we still have challenges, but this is extraordinary work by the entire financial team, and we should thank the legislative leadership for the support we got, because without that change in formula, we wouldn't be sitting where we are today. It just didn't take 100% of our problems away, but it certainly put us in extraordinarily better shape than we have been.
No, absolutely. So this year, it looks a little bit like apples to oranges when you compare, and you see that one-time bump. So next year, when you compare the last two years, it'll be more apples to apples, and it'll level off some. And also with that $324 million fund balance number, please note that $80 million of that is restricted. So it's restricted for grants, it's restricted for future teachers' pension fund contributions, it's restricted for incumbents, and so it's not all free to use, you know, for general use or any purpose. The district cannot just tap into all of that $324. So for our budgetary highlights, in total, the district budgeted $5.6 billion in revenues and $5.7 billion in expenses. And when you look at our total revenues and expenses, budget to actual, we recorded $471 million higher than budget projections for 2018, and that's primarily because of $287 million that was recorded due to those debt restructuring transactions. So those were funds that were freed up to use for operating purposes. And also, you can see for state aid, we were $161 million higher than what we anticipated, again, due to the change in that state funding formula. So that's the majority of the driver of that $471 million variance. On the expense side, we were $185 million lower than budgeted. So for contractual services, which is primarily the reason for that variance, we were $144 million lower in expenses, somewhat due to decline in enrollment, but other costs were down, such as transportation and utilities, and we also served fewer meals for our lunchroom programs. So again, this last slide, again, state aid, we were $161 million over budget from this change in the state funding formula. Federal revenues were also slightly below budget. Again, those lunchroom programs are federally reimbursed, so that was the driver for that change. Our Title I and Title II, we always anticipate being below budget through June 30th there because we- because we carry over excess funds to the next fiscal year because the grant period overlaps. Other revenues were $62 million higher. The revenue category includes things like TIF surplus funds, transitive funds, and just various miscellaneous funds. We record all of our miscellaneous funds in that category. We, $62 million higher than expected there. Services, again, with $144 million lower than what was budgeted, primarily from lower costs in, in utilities, contracting services for the other categories also.
Okay, does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does.
Board members, any other questions? Comments? Well done.
Can I take this time to acknowledge my staff?
Certainly can.
Thank you. Controller's office, please.
Thank you very much for a job very well done.
Thank you.
Okay, let's proceed now with the public comment segment.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please share the rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:30 AM this morning, and I would like to note that we have no registered speakers, Mr. President.
Do you want to recognize the board members that joined us?
Yes, so we have our newest board member that joined us, Austin Goolsbee. Welcome.
We'll introduce you at the board meeting.
And we also have our CEO, Dr. Janice Jackson, and the Chief Education Officer, Latanya McDade. Thank you.
Well, since no one is here to talk, excuse me, during public participation, I'll just take the opportunity to say that it's been a pleasure seeing the transformation from those years of just dire struggle and uncertainty, which not only affected our ability to meet our financial obligations, but I think obviously affected, had an impact on, on the quality of service that we were able to provide to our students. Granted, Dr. Jackson has done an extraordinary job making sure that our financial woes did not materially have an impact on what we, on our number-one responsibility, and that's to provide a first-rate education to all of our hundreds of thousands of students. But we're in a much better, much stronger position to meet that obligation going forward, and that's something that this board is very proud of and extremely pleased with the leadership of CPS. Thank you very much. So, board members, if there are no other comments, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you, everybody.